Okay, welcome to this special committee of the whole meeting. It is September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four at eleven A M. Eddie, would you call the roll?
Come.
Here.
Russell. Kuda.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Larson.
You.
Petrus.
Here.
Hodge.
Here. All right, today we're here to talk, this is really focusing on one issue, which is ARPA. It's an ARPA workshop and we're gonna talk about kind of a good progress report from Directors and Director Plainer. So without any further ado.
And we have a presentation like we did last time. So we wanted to run through again what the goals we're hoping to make this work session, if that is possible. Remind ourselves about the timeline of the deadlines, give you updates on all the things since September third, and then really focus in on the council projects. And then the last part of the session will be part of our strategy for revenue replacement and how to sort of solve that problem and then set up a discussion for next time on reallocations. So as I sort of mentioned, we want to give you an update on the work we've done on those council projects and discuss revenue replacement strategy. And this bottom line is really important. The objective is, given how tight we are with timeframes, is to, the next work session will finalize our look for it so that we know exactly what we're doing from A to Z.
And when do you want to have that last word?
So at the end, we're gonna request in two weeks.
Okay.
You know, it'll be before your next regular scheduled meeting, but we think that's a good time. So here's an update on the timeline, just a reminder to everybody, we've been at this for a while, and then we've just updated it with a whole bunch of things we've done since the last meeting, which we're really gonna focus in on today. Just a reminder, and we made this top one bold in italics because we have an internal deadline of October thirty-first. We're all getting the contracting to be completed, which will allow us to do the execution and encumbrances by the end of the year and get the funds expended by the end of December. There are some exceptions, of course, for public firms, but we want to really pull it by that December thirty-first deadline, so that'll be a recurring theme as we get to the council projects. So update since last time. If you remember, we spoke, we spent most of the last work session talking about the housing and economic development projects. So just as a reminder, we had the LedSafe programming, which is a million dollars. What we've done, and actually I have a handout for you, is we have created some explainers, as we call them, if you ever see that online, which are just short explanations of what a program may be, and this is hopefully the type of information that we're gonna put ultimately in any contract or an agreement that comes before you. But we wanted to get down on paper the things we spoke about last time, the things that were committed to, that we still meet the objectives and desires that you had. So we're gonna be issuing a clearance testing rebate RFP. And then a healthy homes, a lot of these pain remediation, which we're committing to the program that's listed below or listed on the sheet that I gave you. That's all gonna be our H P O office. Down payment assistance, which is gonna be H R C. They've, and I'm gonna pass this out, they've provided their own description, actually not for this one, but for their other program. And we're gonna be working on contracts with them, there's gonna be two contracts. One is their sort of bucket one, contract to do that down payment assistance work by twenty-twenty-six, and then a contract two, which will be the revenue replacement contract, same program, just two different buckets of funding, so we have to read it.
Director Zim, could you help me to understand how this matches up with this? So I think the first item is the second item there on that list, and then this six-hundred-thousand-dollar one is the second one next to contract two, but where does the?
Yeah, there's a couple more slides, so.
Okay, okay.
Had to split this amongst a bunch of slides, and it doesn't match up a hundred percent.
So on the LedSafe, I noticed there's a couple of items on the agenda for tonight that add up to two-hundred-thousand dollars, if you, you know, roughly, for LedSafe. With, and those are just two buildings. What I'm, one, yeah.
The Cuyahoga County.
Right.
Program, it's a grant.
Okay, so I need a little more to this question. So what's the total, I know that we put in ARPA one million, but what's the total of what we've received for LedSafe?
I don't know that number offhand. Brian would be the one, but Enforzian is on vacation. But yeah, we have our, we have our regular LedSafe, we have the counties and state.
Right.
Money, and then this, so it's, it's a really good chunk, which is why we know we can get a lot done, and that's why we have the clearance testing. We sort of created that program, which was not something we were doing before. And then we've been focusing on these larger projects, including daycare and stuff.
Right. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, where this is all headed.
We can get you an update by ten, I just.
Okay.
Exterior home repair, which is the other one on, on the explainer sheet, the H R C is gonna do a lot of work, which they've detailed on their sheet. And similar to the down payment assistance, we're working on two contracts with them. And then our home repair program is listed on that sheet, that would again be included in whatever materials we provide to you. And then this newer program, driveway sidewalks, pathways, and garages, which we've included on the explainer, but there's a new wrinkle to this, which is we're gonna be issuing an RFP for the concrete work, which we can get done and which we can get contracted by the end of this year, but the garage and supplemental tree work, which we know is really important, we're gonna put that into revenue replacement bucket, because it really has been taken a little longer time, but we want to supplement the program and just provide some more assistance in that way. So that's a slight tweak from last time we spoke. And so we'll, again, we'll have all that information before you at some point in the future. And then the program delivery, well, we really think we need an additional person to have this, and so we've got a job description drafted for that, we have a professional position, and then once whatever legislation is passed, we can actively hire that person, but we probably post the job as soon as we can.
Now, is that on the administrative end here, or is it?
That would be, yeah, it would be in our H P O office, we'd have a two-year contract with it. So here's some examples of the things that we've drafted, we've given you the first two, and then the, on the right is the RFP for the LedSafe stuff. And not wanting to print up a lot of paper, but that's what we're hoping to issue. And then on the right is the application for the cleaning services that we're already using. Moving over to the community investment fund, if you remember, there's two side steps, there's the planning side and then the actual small business assistance. So as we discussed last time, and you said we were okay with, we are gonna do a Noble Road market study, we have three quotes for that, so we're really ready to move forward with one of those quotes. A Taylor Road traffic study, RFP's been drafted, a sample is over there on the right, ODOT's reviewing that, because ultimately they're gonna have to approve whatever traffic study we're issuing, so once we hear back from them, we can really go out and issue that. And then we're almost ready with an RFP to do streetscape design for both Noble and Taylor. It was in the two different geographies, but we felt like we could get a better bang for our buck if we did it at one individual RFP. Of course, there'll be geographies within that RFP that the respondent has to respond to, but rather than issue a Noble Road one and Taylor Road one, we'll put it together. And then, as we spoke about last time, the actual business assistance, we're gonna go out to a third party for some of that one-point-two million, so that RFP is being drafted, but just not ready yet. And then the longer-term city program is gonna go through revenue replacement, so we'll have an explainer of that, like we've done here, to say who's eligible, how they're gonna be eligible.
Can I, can I ask you to go back one slide?
Yep.
So I know we've talked about North Coventry, but not in any kind of specific way, but do we, I guess, do we consider the north side of Mayfield between Coventry and, I don't know what street, but going east.
Northwest.
North Coventry, that business district.
Yes.
So what are we gonna do for them?
Well, we're doing a neighborhood study for them, but.
Yeah.
There was no specific ARPA allocation, like you did for Noble and Taylor.
True.
So they can fall into the bucket of the other, other business districts, and we could have a priority towards them. In fact, that will be some of the stuff that's coming out of this neighborhood planning study, but in terms of what was specifically allocated, there is a, there wasn't that North Coventry.
Right, that's true.
President Kuda?
Yes.
I do have one question. These are studies that we're doing on the Noble Road market and Taylor Road. So we get those contracted by ten thirty-one twenty-four. What about expending funds to rebidiate whatever the traffic study or the market study reveals?
So those are gonna not come out of ARPA, they're gonna have to come out of regular, you know, planning funding or implementation funding.
Okay.
But we assume that while we'll be contracted by this year, the studies will take place next year, and so we can build that into our budget discussions with you all.
Okay.
And then.
I'll back one more.
Yes.
Will the community investment also have funds for entrepreneurship startup?
Yeah, that's what, we haven't worked out the details yet, that's, so, but that, that will be one of the components, it's not just, not just writing a check to individual businesses, but it could be for.
No, no reason I was asking, because community investment fund was my, was my project, and I wanted to make sure that was a part of it, and there was a component in here, I made a copy for you regarding homeowners being, trying to be, being able to invest in it as well, but I'll send you, give you a copy, so you'll, okay, thank you.
Is it realistic to assume that we can spend the nine-hundred-thousand dollars piece of this, or at least get it encumbered by the end of October?
No, that's why we, to play it safe, like we were talking last time, we are putting that in the revenue replacement bucket, because we just didn't think we could get it encumbered. When we're talking about giving money and contracting with individuals or businesses, that was just a lot.
Okay, so we're gonna take all this funds, we're going to encumber it somehow, and then it may not be spent, or it may not be assigned to a particular business entity or whoever it may be until next year.
Right.
Okay, I got it, okay, thanks.
The C I C, so as we spoke about last time, we're treating the C I C like a nonprofit, like they're a nonprofit, so that's general agreement, and Chris is here, is being drafted, so that'll just be ready to go whenever the C I C begins to function and meet again. And so we have a car out here, we wanted to give you some updates on the parks side of things, and so Chris Kendall is here, wants to give maybe two, it's our proposal, and there's a few other slides on parks. Chris, if you wanna take it.
Yeah, what we, what we want to do is reallocate some of the remaining non-Kane Park funding toward a brand-new turf field at Dennison, replacing the existing turf, which was installed back in twenty-eleven, so that's quite some time ago, and it does, it does need to be, you know, replaced. To date, only forty-four thousand eight-hundred's been spent toward resurfacing Forest Hill tennis courts. What we did there was we took an area of the tennis courts and converted them into pickleball outdoor, so now we have, that complements our outdoor courts that we have at Dennison now. And then, of course, the remaining balances would be applied toward engineering, turf field excavation, new turf construction installation, purchase of some new gold, electric gator, which is the utility vehicle that has attachments so we can keep the turf, you know, refurbished and things throughout the course of the season as well.
Now, how large is the remaining balance?
So next slide, you'll see here, here's the existing allocations, and some of this is up for discussion today. And I'm Chris, we'll speak to this one, it's sort of self-explanatory. These were the allocations of Parks Fleet Replacement, a hundred K, which should be a hundred-zero there. The Parks Improvement at Dennison is four hundred. Forest Hill, a hundred and ninety-five remaining, the remaining parks, three hundred made, and then the shipping continued, which is five hundred, that's the difference. So Chris, we, this one, the turf replacement costs.
Yeah, so we're, we had a, we did get a quote about a year ago, just to, you know, to be proactive from a firm, I think that, that was for the Dennison turf, it was about eight hundred, but that was from, I think, April of twenty-twenty-three, so we're just assuming that, you know, it's been low over a year, that those costs are gonna probably have gone up. And so we feel more confident that, you know, within that nine-hundred-fifty to a million-dollar range, we'd be able to get us the, you know, where we need to be to renovate that field. Also estimated cost of new field equipment, electric maintenance vehicles, between fifty to seventy-five thousand, and then included there would be potential need for new storage space for field equipment. Unfortunately, last November, the equipment that we had to keep the upkeep of the, of the current field, the storage area was broken into and the vehicle itself was stolen. So we do need to, you know, replace that.
Is there any line items, is there any line items to repair or to fix that storage area?
Well, we did, we did replace the, what happened was the old Dennison locker room bathhouse area at the front, there was an open, like foyer, and we had a rolling door, but it was like a cage rolling door, so you could.
See.
See right in there. We did replace the door, it's now, it's secured, and it's more of a traditional rolling door. But we just want to be able to look at, you know, better storage for, you know, that equipment.
But didn't that, that building itself need some maintenance? Because I know at one time, we, we had talked about painting it on the outside and refreshing it up and things on.
Well, that, that house, as it currently stands, is mostly a brick building.
Correct.
It's mostly brick. I'm sure there's probably, because it hasn't been used since the end of twenty, two thousand seven, so there's probably other.
Maintenance.
Other maintenance.
Yeah.
Needs or whatnot, or.
I was just making sure that, that.
Right.
Is covered in there as far as the maintenance of that building?
Sure.
President Kuda?
Yeah.
I may have missed it, but we had allocated four-hundred-thousand dollars for the Kane Park sound lighting and video equipment, has that been covered someplace else?
We haven't gotten yet, but you.
We've gotten quotes for the lighting, but we, I don't think anyone's seen anything besides that. We have quotes for the lighting, that, the lighting upgrades that they want to install, but I haven't seen anything for video or.
Sound.
Other, yeah.
And we have the multimedia stuff. I mean, you know, my concern is that, you know, we went through another season of rentals, and it's, it's kind of flushing money down the toilet at this point, you know, because if what I was told last year, almost a year ago this month, that we would recover all of the money that we invested in the sounding and lighting equipment in two and a half years, then renting doesn't seem to make sense, considering the fact that, you know, if, if that is a fact, that we would recover the money in two and a half years, it seems like the agreement was, yeah, we're gonna buy and not rent anymore. So it'd be nice if, if that happens, you know, well before next season. Go ahead.
Question on the, the field up there at Dennison. How much of the use of that Dennison field is city-sponsored events versus third-party users?
That's a, that's a good question. I don't know the actual breakdown of that. You know, we do, we do our, our flag football program, we also partner with Sean Sullivan, who, Heights United Soccer, who does the fall, fall and spring seasons. We also partner in the spring, summer with Jump Start Sports, they, they utilize that, we, we have an agreement with them, where they come in and they do like the introductory-type baseball programs, such as T-ball coach pitch, and then those kids matriculate up into our recreation programs, our U, baseball and softball programs. We get a lot of use from the, you know, the high school uses it for their fall soccer, both the men and women's teams, Varsity and J V, Beaumont High School contracts with us to utilize that field, and some of the other user groups that are, that are not directly run through Parks Rec, but are indirectly, we assist them in providing, you know, space for facilities, such as the East Side Kickers, which is based here in Cleveland Heights, Heights Tiger Football, which is based here in Cleveland Heights. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
It does, if I could ask a follow-up, and has someone done a cost-benefit analysis as to whether we can afford to do artificial turf replacement versus real grass on that field?
Well, the, the issue with the, the, the grass, and I think initially why we decided to make that initial investment back in the mid, the mid-aughts, is because the grass was just, I don't know what, what is beneath that grass surface, to be honest with you. I think it was, I don't know if it's a landfill or what, but it was just, anytime we would have torrential rains or bad weather, it, the field would be almost unplayable, and the turf just made, made a lot of sense at that time. And, you know, you're talking two thousand eleven, this is now twenty-twenty-four, so it, it's probably been overdue for, you know, an overhaul of some kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it possible to get a list of the revenue that we've generated through contracts for use of the field?
Sure, is there a certain timeframe you would, you would like, or just over the course of the?
I guess maybe over the last year, just so that we have a sense of, you know, you shared that a couple groups like Beaumont are using the field, so just getting a sense for how much money it makes, I think would be helpful. Thank you.
So these prices for turf replacement is pretty much in line with what the school district was analyzing for the football field at Heights High, and the same issue we had, I mean, if you try to play on natural grass, even though people feel like that's an important thing to do, I mean, the, the fields, if you're in a rainy season, the fields are just unplayable, and once you put the turf down, their preparation for the turf to try to undo all that, to put natural grass back in, is probably gonna be cost prohibitive.
Additionally, we are also in the process, one of my colleagues at Parks and Rec is contacting some areas too, just to, that have done recent upgrades, to get a, just to see, you know, where, what they ended up spending. I know Villalangos St. Joseph High School unveiled a brand-new turf field. Last year, they unveiled it, they're actually playing for the first time in that school's history, they're playing therapy, they're able to host games now without having to go to outside groups to rent, and I think they had a whole breakdown on their website, and I think that the turf alone was close to, it's close to a million dollars.
That's exactly accurate. Shaw High School, the Browns put in their brand-new football stadium.
Oh, did they?
And the turf alone was a million dollars just for that portion, without the, the seats or anything else.
Right, right.
I'm not very familiar with this area, so I turned to Google and learned that the estimated life for a turf field is like eight to ten years, so you shared that it was installed a little over ten years ago.
Right.
So if we don't put a million dollars into this, what's the alternative? Are we going to have to spend, you know, large maintenance costs, you know, every year or two on it?
Well, I, I, I don't even know how much we've just accrued over years in terms of just maintenance, other than probably man-hours and taking the equipment out there and just, you know, doing whatever, you know, the equipment does. But, yeah, so I, I don't have a, a real ballpark answer, you know, I have regard as far as, you know, maintenance side of it. The other thing is that it is measured for, you know, European soccer play, which is, you know, I, I'm not familiar with, you know, soccer as well, other than my kids played, but that, that I think affords us, you know, that could be a selling point too, as far as trying to, you know, have other groups, you know, come in and. The other, the other thing too, I don't think we've, we've even, the existing field, I think in that time period too, I don't, I don't even know if we've ever had it relined since two thousand eleven, that's, that would be another maintenance cost that if, if this doesn't go through, that we probably would have to, you know, consider as well.
You know, the only thing I would add is that, you know, any kind of cost-benefit analysis to this, I play sports on both grass and turf. If it rains one day, you're probably not gonna play the next day on grass, that's been my experience, and when it rains the day before and it's turf, you can play. So the one thing that would be difficult is that, I can tell you that's been true for thirty, thirty years I've been in, in this baseball league, but the thing that I don't think would be measurable is, you know, if we went back to grass, you know, how many times would we lose revenue because it rained on one day and then they couldn't play the next, you know, obviously you can't play the day it rains, but then the next day as well, sometimes, sometimes it can be two days if it rains hard, and I don't know, I don't know that there's a way to calculate something like that. Go ahead. Oh, yeah.
Oh, changing topic.
Yeah.
So on slide fourteen, Director, so these items here, I understand this whole proposal, so these are items that you're sort of gonna like undo, which is gonna free up these amounts of money to pay for things that are on slide fifteen.
And obviously, some of that is part of the, later part of our discussion today.
I get it, okay.
Council projects, so that's the proposal. We just wanted, before we get to the, the council projects, we wanted to give you an update on the conversations we've had on the two not-for-profits, and actually, Chris has mostly been the one leading the charge on this, so I'll let you get the lead on the first few slides and.
Sure, well, last Friday, Brian and I, Brian Iorio and I met with both Future Heights and Start Right, and had very productive conversations, were very encouraging, and it was, it was great to hear how enthusiastic they were about getting started and how understanding they were with, you know, with the limitations that are inherent in, you know, ARPA fund expenditures, but we've basically reached, forgive the term, I just came out of a labor negotiation, a tentative agreement that is basically going to be rehab-centric. We're gonna have Start Right and Future Heights engaging in very similar home rehab programs. We, we figured, after discussions with the outside council and internally, you know, it's the best way to get as many new affordable housing units in various neighborhoods all over the city in the shortest amount of time. It's just most bang for the buck, and it's going to, we think, and are hopeful, that it's gonna go a long way towards developing a more sustainable community development corporation environment within the city, so we're, we're, we're very enthusiastic about it as well.
So for Future Heights, it was, it's pretty straightforward, because that was their program to begin with, so agreement to be worked on with them. And for Start Right, since. And for Start Right, since, uh, council had allocated it in two different, uh, categories, the rehab, which is the Good Neighbor Project, the infill project, that likely means that there's some legislation that's necessary. However, we're gonna be bringing legislation before you for all this stuff. So that can be solved as part of one of those. But we just wanted to, uh, let you know, first of all, we had the conversations and that they're agreeable to, to those changes. So, uh, a lot of progress with Start Right and Future Heights.
Uh, so I think that I heard that Start Right was planning to build two more infill houses this year or next year. Do we know if that would be affected by this being reallocated?
That, that was part of their previous agreement with the city.
Okay.
So they had a number of properties and there were essentially three that remained, one that they already have completed, but two that were still. So that's separate but related to.
Okay, so not effective.
So the, 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 the questions and the concerns you've had on the infill housing for, uh, Start Right for three hundred has been successfully answered?
Well, what, what they, what we discussed and Start Right agreed that that would be best moving forward is that they're going to focus, they would like to spend the whole five hundred thousand on rehab. Because with the short amount of time we have with the ARPA funds, that's ultimately going to produce more affordable housing units than focusing on the infill right now. But with rehab units and creating these additional revenue streams for the CDCs, this should free up program funds going forward. And when they're ready to move forward, they'll still have the lots, they'll still be able to move forward with the infill housing.
So the three hundred thousand and the two hundred thousand are both going to rehab?
Yes.
Okay.
And where are the units that they're gonna rehab coming?
So those are going to be through the cities list, I forget the acronym.
RFEI.
RFEI, and, uh, they'll, they'll be scoping the private market for opportunities as well. So they're not gonna be relying entirely on the RFEI units.
And just so I understand this, the money they make, you know, for lack of a better, I don't know if it's gonna be profit or just break even, but then they'll turn around and take that money and do?
They'll have to reinvest it, so it'll be programming come under ARPA.
So it'll be reinvested in the projects?
By contract. I mean, that's what they have to do with it.
By federal law, yeah.
Yeah, okay, got it.
But the good thing is that we believe now with both of these CDCs on board that it can move out of the revenue replacement category and do back into bucket one. So that helps free us.
Free us one.
Because the infill would have been a challenge if we had continued to go.
So that's, that's almost like doubling the, uh, the housing market far as rehab, with both of them working on the same.
Yeah, both half a million each.
Yeah, okay.
So now we get to the, uh, the highlight of the day, which is the council projects discussion, which is gonna be mostly you guys, but we thought we'd just maybe set, set up the goals for today, which is, do you still want to pursue the allocation? If yes, uh, it would be great to hear very clearly what, uh, you want to come out of that program and identify any specific changes to the allocation amount that may be something you're interested in. A reminder that everything needs to be done by October thirty-first for it to be part of, um, the typical bucket stuff. But if that's not possible, then obviously revenue replacement is a possibility, but we're trying to avoid that, so just keep that in mind. But if no, if you, if the discussion turns out, hey, we don't think that this project can be done, then that would go into the sort of reallocation discussion that we're gonna have at the next meeting. So those are sort of the ground rules that we thought would make sense.
Is it my understanding that the revenue replacement is capped at ten million?
Capped at ten, but really the best practice is, is eight million, so that's why.
So where are we in?
It all depends on where we land on all that stuff. So we were, last, last time you were really close. You're at like nine point eight million, and I think we've shaved off a little bit here and there, but we're still teetering.
Making you uncomfortable.
Yeah, so that's why we really want to just open this up to you guys and see where you want to go with these things, and then, you know, we'll, we'll get you there.
Just waiting on the next slide for.
So the next slide here, so here are the, really the four projects that we thought. And, and the first two are pilot programs, the shipping container program. So that's Council Maddox, the tiny home pilot program. That's, uh, Vice President Russell. And then, um, two parks-related projects, park vehicle enhancement and safety lighting, police blue lights. So there's a lot there. And so really, this is, I think we sort of turn it over to you guys to talk about what you want to do with these and if you want to do.
So I was waiting for this meeting, uh, with the rest of council. I know I, I made it clear that I wanted to go ahead and throw the shipping container program, uh, funding into reallocation to really see what else we could do to enhance those parks, to really utilize that. My goal with that program essentially is to find ways to connect the community to the parks and to our, our staff and what's happening, and specifically Dennison, uh, because it's so far away from everything else. And so anything we can do to connect our programming or, or find a way to do that or utilize some type of gathering space for that, um, was, was the goal of that. But I didn't want to hold up that program, and so working with the staff to figure out how to reallocate those funds back into the parks or the projects, I think is critical. Um, that, so I, I just wanted to let everybody know that about the program. I wanted to spend some time though on those park vehicle enhancements though, because I still think that is something.
Okay, I just want to ask you a question about that. Let's suppose, you know, we, we talk about Dennison and we come up with some ideas, but it doesn't come up to nearly five hundred thousand dollars. What else, I mean, would you be willing to see that go into something?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I just, uh, uh, anything that we can do, I, I obviously want to spend down the money. Anything we can do to enhance those parks and, and again specifically, anything we can add to Dennison Park, I think, uh, would be helpful. And I think that, that's more than enough money to do something, I think, significant and be able to move that money around, and I'm, I'm absolutely open to that.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your names.
Uh, Chris, Christopher Kendall.
Chris, um, is, is the resurfacing of the, actually, maybe I shouldn't be asking you this. Is the resurfacing of the tennis courts, uh, tennis slash pickleball courts at Dennison, is that covered in what, in this, I'm sorry, it, everything kind of went by kind of fast. That was covered already in the slides that went by?
That's already money, ARPA money that's allocated for a project. So it's not the, it's not the turf, uh, built into the turf number?
Right, but, but it's, it's money allocated for Dennison Park. All right, okay, I just wanted to make sure because those, those are in bad shape.
Yeah, so the four hundred thousand did not include the pickle, like, the pickleboard need, pickleball courts need to be taken out of that money. So whatsoever left, then that's, would be used for the Dennison resurfacing. That wasn't included in this.
Got it.
Is it, is it been out yet?
I think so.
Completely, it's been, oh, we haven't got.
I don't know, I, I don't have an updated one, I wasn't prepared to answer.
Are you done, or was there more than you?
I was gonna say something, I saw your hand.
Um, so am I remembering correctly that your hope was that the shipping container money would go towards the one million dollar cost for the? Okay, so we're talking about, that's what the staff is requesting, so maybe there could be additional money that we could come up with for something else in addition to that, that would, right?
So, and, and I didn't know if you may have any other questions about the shipping containers? Just my, oh, we'll get back to that when we talk about reallocations. But the, the vehicle enhancements, I think, are important for all of the parks. And that, that's something that I really think for, from a safety and engagement purpose, I think from being able to service the community. I think anything to enhance the vehicles that go in those, in those parks, that allow them to be able to maneuver, allow them to be able to, to, to get into spaces that maybe, uh, many of their vehicles can't, or, or they're currently using SUVs that go through, I think would absolutely be helpful. So not just for our safety purposes, but also to service the parks. I, I think there, there's a lot of vehicles out there that we can utilize, I think, to maneuver around and, and from city staff to special events that we have. Not just even in the parks, as I was talking to some folks, it's just of, of some of our street festivals and things. We could also pull those out for things like that, that help us to get in to other areas and be able to service and so. But I would leave it up to the city staff to obviously see what that looks like and what vehicles we could have that would have that, the best impact. But that's something, that's how that conversation happened.
Is, are you talking about bikes or does this go?
Uh, this would be like bikes or like ATVs, kind of like those carts, but, um, they, they have specialized carts that, um, like officers can use and get in, or, uh, even paramedic safety, uh, folks. They, you can put someone on the backup and kind of get them in and out of parks a little bit easier, stuff like that.
Go ahead, I, I know you're not done, but.
Oh, no. Okay, so just going back to slides fourteen and fifteen, it seems like item number one here on this, on this slide, and item three, you already have a use for those monies with the Dennison Park, um, field replacement. That leaves item number two and item number four for discussion. What, what I'm hearing is, you either want clarity from us on should you pursue those or if they're pursuable, do you have any recommendations of where you'd want those monies to go? Or am I off?
Yeah, we have some ideas, uh, at least for the tiny home. One, uh, the safety lighting, it's a broader conversation, I think.
So let's, let's talk about the tiny homes first and then?
Well, I have one question about the shipping containers too. Because we, I know we allocated the money for shipping containers. Out, anything that's, I think, I know that comes with the community engagement, but anything outside of those shipping containers, I think we should look at as a council, what we're gonna do with it. Far as if there's any money left, because I know you talked about a pilot with the shipping containers.
Right, that's initially why I was so high, is the goal is to see what we could put there at Dennison and to see if there's enough funding to be able to possibly put something else similar, another shipping container, another park, to kind of enhance that service there.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that once we, if, if the project of the shipping containers go forward, there's extra money out of that, we just don't, we all as a council.
He just said.
Oh, yeah, the, the shipping containers are done. Yeah, that, that, that money's being reallocated.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's the.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Okay. Uh, uh, far as the tiny homes, you want me to go into that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Oh, so, uh.
Share what you're.
Yes, uh, actually, I've been actually given, showing a lot of video and, uh, a lot of, uh, giving a lot of feedback to Eric regarding, uh, what things look like just by traveling and looking at the new tiny villages in different cities and different areas of what people are doing. Because Eric really didn't have an idea of what I was actually talking about. And, uh, so there are some prospects out there that we probably need to look at far as a, what is it, a consulting, um, help me with it. But we would need, uh, we would like to add, make that two hundred and fifty thousand to do the allocation. You, you talk on that part.
So, um, currently our zoning doesn't fund it, tiny homes.
None does it.
But while there are other places around the country that do, ours doesn't. But it's certainly a tool in the toolbox of housing that, uh, people are using, and it's one that we could explore. So the idea, and I, I may have even said this in previous meetings, is we should, we should and need to do at least a zoning study, to see what it would take to allow for tiny homes.
And then that ADU discussion, that, that tiny homes wasn't part of that, right?
That wasn't part of it, because at the time, you know, we weren't thinking tiny homes, but really they're, they're part of the same type of discussion, and a lot of communities are talking about.
If the discussion's about senior housing, I would say, yeah.
Right. So interestingly, on Friday, I was at a, a meeting and I met, uh, the planning director from Cleveland, who is a Cleveland Heights resident. And she said that they are gonna be doing in Cleveland, a, not a tiny home village, but they're calling them a cottage village, which sounds very much like what we're trying to do. And in fact, in Shaker Heights, there's also something coming down the pike similar to that. So the timing is actually pretty good for us to take our time on this over the next year or so to do, do it as a study. And then maybe as a design build potentially for the village itself. But we just don't know the costs or any of that, that part yet. So that's why we were saying, it, it certainly couldn't be a straight-up ARPA project because we would never read the, the timetable.
Yeah.
But as a revenue replacement project, uh, I, I could see that as a planning director in researching that, yeah.
So you were talking two hundred and fifty?
Yes.
Um, and how does that break down in terms of the contracts that we need?
So that will be willing?
Going to revenue replacement, so you don't have to worry about it?
Yes, and, uh.
And all of the, all for the study?
Yes, uh-huh, for the study and a potential bill if we can get the zoning and things done.
Yeah, the, the, the zoning study itself shouldn't be, um, I'd say more than a hundred. Generally speaking, a hundred thousand dollars. But it's, if we wanted to do a design like we're doing with the ADUs, get those designs, then that's where the additional money is coming in.
And the zoning study, is that after you pick a location? Or is it just something that would be a citywide?
We'd have to look citywide. Of course, as part of that study, we would look at potential locations. People will analyze it, but, um, it, it would be a citywide.
Question, aren't we doing a study looking at allowing auxiliary living spaces on lots?
Accessory dwelling units, which are related, but not a hundred percent the same as tiny homes.
Where are we in doing that study?
Uh, so the county, we, we have the County Planning Commission. They've done a study that says, hey, this is something you can do, here are the benefits of it. So now they are working on proposed zoning. And in the next two months, that zoning should be ready for the public type of discussion.
I believe there's a meeting here at City Hall tomorrow.
So tomorrow, that's about our design competition, which is a separate phase.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah. And I would think that for the majority of the lots in this city, you are going to essentially be putting a tiny home as an accessory dwelling unit.
Well, that's where the distinction, because a tiny home could sit by itself, as opposed to an accessory dwelling unit is. A unit that is related to a principal home.
But a, aside from the zoning changes and will the zoning changes also have to address the necessary square footage for the house and rooms?
Absolutely, yeah.
So there seems to me there's a lot of overlap.
There's similarities.
Okay.
But, uh, again, the ADU study is very much focused on ADUs. This is different, different enough where it's not completely transferable.
And if we're gonna spend money on a zoning change, I would like to think we will do a comprehensive study?
Yes.
Versus focusing on this one issue?
Yeah, we, we certainly would look at, there are some other, uh, housing typologies that we've been exploring. So this is an opportunity to, to look, you know, whether it's a, a triplex, a quadplex, and how those might fit into our neighborhood. So it's an opportunity, we can, we don't have to call it the tiny home project. We can call it the housing, uh, housing livability initiative. But it's looking at, you know, how our residential districts, um, perform.
Okay, so just mechanically, if you tried to move some of this in revenue replacement, which, which is already a pretty full category. I mean, how, I mean, how do you mechanically see having these items number two and item number four roll up? I mean, would you, you know, and would you wash ARPA mon, funds using another vehicle? So you'd have more money next year?
Potentially. We, we have a slide in a little bit to talk about some revenue replacement strategies.
Okay, fine.
And I would like to have an opportunity to talk with, uh, the police chief to talk about, uh, safe lights and blue lights as well. Because I did not know until the last meeting that, that was not something that, uh, the police chief thought was doable. But I would like to discuss what is doable and what we could, uh, change that into. If nothing, then nothing but a convers, I think a conversation would be good to have.
I mean, yeah, that was unexpected.
Yes.
Uh, but still, we want to heed that. I mean, I don't know if he said it wasn't doable, I think he basically said it's not effective.
And I didn't hear him say it, I just got it from, just sent it around the table, so.
Do I have that right? I mean, it's not an effective strategy to?
I'd have to defer to the, the mayor on that, because that was a part of his conversation. I can, I can provide a little bit with the information that I got from the chief is that he was, um, skeptical about its efficacy. And it, based on his experience, beyond that, I don't have a lot of detail, but we can try to get a little more information about that for you.
Okay. Is, would it be possible if I can have a meeting with him and talk about maybe some safety issues around this, uh, subject?
I don't see why not.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Um, did I hear correctly that, um, there is an option for us to, we were initially looking at tiny home pilot program. We're estimating that the actual study itself might cost just a hundred thousand. Did I hear correctly that you said maybe we can make it more general so that it's a, like, housing zoning study more generally instead of just? Okay, so that's sort of like a decision point for us, whether we want that study to be just on ti- tiny homes or all sorts of housing typology?
You allocated as specifically a tiny home project, and Vice President, of course, that's her particular interest. You allocated as specifically tiny home project and the vice president, of course, that's her particular interest, but.
So tiny homes would still be a part of it if it were more general, but it would also include other things as well? So it seems like we might get more bang for our buck if we were to make it, you know, more general?
I have, I have no, no problem with that, but I really want, and I'm just letting all council know, I really want to look into the tiny homes. Because I think it's an opportunity for our seniors. Uh, when we talk to people about it, uh, regarding ARPA, it was a one hundred percent goal. That was one of the first things they said was definitely yes. Uh, it will actually help some of our seniors if we could actually figure out a way to do something like this to keep, so they will live, uh, be able to stay at home in place and maybe move from, most of Cleveland Heights have stairs, a lot of stairs. And move to somewhere where it's one floor or something, but I think if people would actually look on the websites and Facebook in different cities, that you would see the tiny villages and I just said tiny villages, but smaller capacity homes going up in a lot of different areas and, uh, different capacity. And I mean, Atlanta has one that they just done and he, actually he's doing a second one. Um, Myrtle Beach has one that's really beautiful where they have grocery stores and everything right in the area. I mean, it may not fit our city, but I'm quite sure we have great minds here and I'm quite sure we can find a way to fit in something that will be doable.
Yeah, it's just good to hear that we should be able to do all of that. Plus also look at other typologies.
Yep. And I'm just happy that the law, I mean, like, uh, the director of planning is truly interested into it as I brought it up. He has been actually investigating a lot of different, uh, areas far as, uh, tiny homes or small homes or modular homes or, you know.
So could we do this one by one, the shipping contain, the money for the shipping containers? What's the timeline for figuring out and the methodology for figuring out how we're gonna reallocate money to Dennis in particular and?
That's the next meeting you guys are gonna talk about your suggestions for the reallocations.
Right.
It's just, it's the next, uh, meeting we're having for the reallocation.
So by that meeting, we wanna be able to say, okay, shipping containers five hundred K goes to Dennis and turf project. And then we can figure out the legislation that's necessary to accomplish.
Okay.
Do we know exactly, Anthony, do you know exactly what, uh, a pilot program would be for a shipping container?
We we can't, we're not, we don't, we wouldn't have time to do it in the timeframe.
No, 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 I'm just asking, did you have?
Oh, it was typically about two hundred to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars between the planning and and building it out, which is why I pretty much doubled it. So we could do another one if we wanted to, but it it, that costs strength dramatically depending on what type of container we would have been putting down.
Yeah, no, I was just, I know in your head, if you're looking, you had to get some type of idea of what they cost.
Um, and is there money left, oh, well, I guess we don't know in this moment, to increase the tiny home project to two fifty, but I guess.
Again, we'll have to do an analysis, but I think initially the shipping container, the parked vehicles are going towards the Dennis and turf project. We need to make sure that those numbers all align. So then there's the tiny home and safety lighting, um, allocations. And so that's where those numbers could could shift.
And then what about the what vehicle, parked vehicle, what vehicles and the cost, same thing, well, two weeks?
Yeah, and I'm, my assumption is that with those, both of those projects are gonna probably end up getting absorbed, because there's a thousand different ways you can get those vehicles outside of that. So that that's what I figured, that we can knock out this project and work on solutions for that later. Um, and maybe even as we're talking about budget conversations and things like that, would they give them some better needs assessment?
Okay, fair enough.
Oh, go ahead. It might be worthwhile to just jump to this next piece, because I think it'll.
Well, I just wanna ask one more question of of Vice President Russell. By the way, Vice President Russell's here, we need to let the record show that. Let's suppose, just for the sake of discussion, you meet with the police chief and he convinces you, you know, we ought to do something else. Um, do you have, do, will you have some, like, alternative?
Yes.
Okay. Cause.
That's why I would like to have a dialogue with you.
Yeah, right.
So tha- those two are still sort of up in the air for right now, but hopefully by the next meeting, we know, so.
Can I ask a quick question? Sorry, following up on that last, uh, comment on the the lighting program, is that, I'm not sure, is this a, um, follow-up discussion with the committee of the whole and police chief to kick this around and understand it, or is this a private meeting?
I would like to talk with the police chief to kick around some ideals and see what his, what the objective was or what the conversation was. And then after that, that would come to the committee of the whole.
Just wanna make sure I understood.
Yeah, cause may, I may have some different ideals or, you know.
Right, I just hear a clock ticking in the background, so I'm just trying to.
Oh, no, I know, when when I leave here, I was going to try to make an appointment with my.
She's left in a clock, I heard, it was the chief clock.
I was, I was gonna make an appointment with you to, uh, discuss some things around, uh, the lighting, but, uh, and then bring it to the committee of the whole.
Last thing I'm on here.
I can't, it can't hurt to, you know, talk with all of council to sort of set the stage for that conversation.
I have nothing to ask you at this particular moment. Not me, you were called in, I guess, because we were talking about me making an appointment with you and I wanted to talk to you around around, uh, safety lighting, please, and maybe have some suggestions myself or some different avenues for that fund. But I was not prepared to do it at this particular moment and then I wanted to bring it to the committee of the whole, but you were, you were called, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm glad to, uh, you know, when, when I remember talking with the mayor, but we've talked about the the blue lighting individually. They were finding, you know, years ago when they were there, um, since everyone has cell phones, they weren't being used, um, as frequently, if you will, as we thought they would be. And the times they were used, sometimes it was people just playing with the phones and, you know, um, but the, the the blue, I would say in general, like the blue lighting and the cameras, that seemed to help because that offered, hey, there's the blue light there, there's, you know, cameras there, which offers, um, you know, a sense of protection that people, you know, that we're watching as being recorded, so.
Okay, so that's a plus.
Yes. But yeah, no, I'm I'm happy if you wanted to meet another time and and talk about it.
That'd be great. The mayor's given permission.
Mr. President, the the other, um, you know, we we are still in the implementation phase of the enhancement of our, uh, surveillance network, those cameras. Um, and including the parks in that. Uh, and that speaks to to what the the chief was just talking about, sort of having those cameras there, not only as a turn, but also as a, a mechanism for, uh, solving, situations and discovering what happened in the particular incident in one of our parks as well. And that was thankfully, in part funded by the city's ARPA, um, funds as well.
Um, regarding the blue light, so were we talking about like those like blue poles that people could use to like dial the police if there's an issue? So, um, I I work at Case Western and, um, the university is actually removing them because they found that they're not especially effective. But I do like the idea of increased lighting, increased cameras. I, um, as a tenant, park in a city lot, their cars are regularly broken into. If we were to talk about, you know, maybe increasing the number of cameras that we might be able to include in like parking lots, I think that that could be, you know, a good use.
And actually, I was not talking about a phone.
Okay. Or, so, um, help me to to understand, I'm not sure what they are.
Uh, well, basically they're blue lights and they were buttons, they were safety zones. So if, uh, a person is running through the park or being chased or something's going on, they don't have, well, if if you're gonna be attacked or whatever happens, you lose your cell phone, it's gonna take your cell phone, because everybody knows that, to get help. So if you're running through the park or you're running somewhere, then you are, uh, someone is chasing you, then the blue light is there, there's a button that you can hit and continue to run. Where if a police or someone who is, uh, you're missing or whatever, they have an idea of where you were, where you're located. And they they can pursue or have a trail of where you are. It's just a a a safety thing to just kind of hit and run.
I could be mistaken, I think the ones at Case serve like both of those purposes, where like you can get emergency like responder on the phone or you could, you know, just press it and keep running something with it. Oh, yeah, you were, you remember them.
Yeah, but, uh, I'm willing to talk to them about, you know, changing that or doing something different that around safety.
So just a little bit more clarity for myself, I mean, the the value of the blue lights that you typically see on a college campus is that there's a trail of them. So you're at one, you see another one in the distance and you always have a blue light that you're able to go to essentially and and call for help. And, you know, I'm surprised Case is pulling them out, but if they are, they are, they 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 must have a valid reason. But I think that is the system that you were proposing for the parks, so, okay, just wanna know.
Yeah, yeah, I, um, think I I wanted to thank Lieutenant Petrus for providing that input about about Case Western. Um, I'd seen, and I just, I just pulled it up, there's a a pretty good explainer that, um, University of Colorado Boulder provided about why they're removing the campus blue light phones. Um, and this is from twenty fifteen, actually. Um, and one of the things that they indicate, basically it says, uh, the blue light phones were great technology twenty years ago. Uh, but they have become outdated as mobile technology expands. And so that's sort of, you know, in line with with the chief's experience on the efficacy and and the usefulness of those. Especially given the the cost benefit analysis that we might do for, uh, ongoing service for those phones. Uh, because they, that's what they ultimately are, you press the button and it's sort of a, a phone system that contacts emergency services. But I I I, like I said in the last meeting, I think that it, you know, it still bears a little bit of of research and I'm not just sort of opposed on in to the concept. Think there might still be some utility, but I think it could probably require a bit more, um, understanding of the cost benefit and an understanding of, um, how to prevent sort of the, the misuse of of those. You know, it's just, it's so easy for a kid to just walk by and, you know, press a button and run. Uh, or something like that, that that might, um, provide a little bit more hassle for for responses to actual emergencies. Um, and so that's something that that I think we can take a look at, is that something that we can take a look at? Um, either in the Parks and Rec Committee or in the Public Safety Committee as a concept. But I'm not sure that given the the urgency of getting this money spent, that that we can have that conversation about this in particular. Like I said, I I'm not just adamantly opposed to, you know, using this as a concept in order to augment and enhance, uh, safety in our parks either.
I just had a random question, the chief was here. I I know we've talked about reallocating a parked vehicle enhancements, but just as part of a broader conversation, do you see a need for officers having something like that? To maneuver through parks or do you, or the current cruises are, do they serve that purpose? Do you feel like? Especially events like that, I'm just curious, as we're having a broader conversation about it.
You know, I've thought about about that over the past couple of years as far as. We used to have, um, other vehicles used, but we didn't find them, um, as effective in our, in our policing, if you will, but again, I I wouldn't be necessarily against it, you know, to have maybe a smaller patrol vehicle for more easy access on the trailways and what have you down to the parks, but, um, but I would, I wouldn't be, you know, opposed for further conversation for that.
Okay, just give, thank you.
So revenue replacement, uh, just as a reminder, we spoke about this earlier. We've got ten million set aside, that's the the allotment that most communities took. We've been advised to use about eight million and it's really to replace funds that were spent to avoid cuts in government services. But there's two options we've been considering, so there's a traditional revenue replacement, which is primarily what we've been talking about, which is not, doesn't need to be encumbered by the end of the year, but it still has to be spent by twenty twenty-six through paying of salaries. But that still requires legislation and a a budget amendment. But there's a second option, which is to actually remove the project from ARPA and replace it with another one. So for example, if we have a shovel-ready project, let's say a sewer project that we know we can get out and bid and, uh, by the end of the year, move that in to ARPA spending. And then that leaves, opens up our general funded, our capital budget to do a longer term project. Whether it's, you know, some of the housing things we're talking about, the tiny homes, or maybe even looking at the shipping containers, parked vehicle enhancement enhancements in that way. So, uh, we don't have today any examples of that, because we didn't wanna spend a lot of time on it. But what we can do is bring to the next council session, hey, here's one, two, five projects that we think we could do this year. And then take that completely out of, or use ARPA funds to to fund those and then take some other monies and apply those more generally.
Are are you thinking about infrastructure type projects or?
Projects where we, you know, either have, uh, a bid ready to go or maybe we're we're close enough, we're by the end of the year, we can do that. We haven't had, you know, a discussion yet with, uh, the director, but it's just, it just was an idea that we wanted to just explore. Um, yeah, go ahead.
So I would encourage you to look possibly at design build road, road projects. I mean, that's, I mean, you're gonna be spending money for roads next year. It's a great way to, it's a great way to wash the funds, in my opinion, but you guys are the experts, obviously. But I think we need to have a clear understanding that if we're gonna pause something, for example, whatever the blue light project replacement is, if it can't get done in time, you've since, you spent seven hundred and fifty thousand, I'm gonna use the example of roads or whatever it may be. Spend the money this year on a design build project, so that seven hundred and fifty goes out the door this year. It doesn't have to be spent next year, but next year you can use that general fund money for whatever the blue light replacement would be.
That's the, uh, the strategy. Um, just setting the the stage for next time, but, uh, based upon everything we heard today, we wanna go back and look at the allocations and then bring back to you not only the revenue replacement ideas, but also our recommendations for reallocations, you heard some of them today. But, uh, we wanna, as, as we said earlier on, we wanna be able to finalize this really at the next meeting. So if you all have any idea, you have more information based upon meetings that you have, uh, next time is the time to bring it, because we're really at the point where we need to act with urgency. So just to wrap up, we'd like to schedule that work session two weeks out, um, where we would provide updates again, give the overall budget status, talk about revenue replacement and reallocations, really focus on that, and then give you a general schedule of legislation, so what you could expect and when. In the meantime, we'll work on some of those amendments, uh, we'll, when we can issue the RFPs and, uh, just keep on working on the overall timeline.
So sort of in a spirit of clarity, can we get a spreadsheet or some other, uh, document, uh, at least, at least the day prior to the meeting that sort of deep details all the projects that total thirty-eight million, what bucket they're in, what's left in each bucket, what projects are actually being funded, what projects are not being funded? I mean, there was a, there was a very good document that that was prepared to us, that was prepared for for staff, I think, you know, back in, I believe, May or March. Um, but I think that would be very, very helpful, kind of like at a glance, we as council people can immediately see, hey, we've got thirty-eight million dollars. This is how it's being spent. I mean, maybe there's the, I mean, you look at the sewer project, there's a lot of detail in there, not necessarily looking for the specific detail. I'm looking more for, okay, sort of a high.
Totals.
Total.
Yeah, totals, I think.
Um, can you also provide a slide, two slides or three slides that, uh, reflects the two million for Noble and the two million for Taylor? So that, uh, residents know what is going actually to Noble and to Taylor? And if we have any thing that we need to discuss with that list, we can do it prior to?
Yeah, well, we had that in the last presentation, we'll bring it back.
Yeah, I saw that.
Um, I'm assuming that the initial engagement with Bricker was under fifty thousand, but do we have even like, you know, like a feeling, like a gut sense of how much the total cost of the engagement with Bricker will be?
Will be?
Yeah, in total. Yeah, in total. So we paid Guy House two hundred and fifty and it, do you think like maybe a hundred thousand in total? Um I think we're nearing uh based on the most recent invoice, we're nearing the fifty. Okay. Um closer to forty, but you know, getting close to her. We'll be coming to council just looking for authorization um to extend that. I would say um with respect to potential compliance assistance, we could exceed a hundred. Um I don't think we would, um I had finance director and I have talked about this, I don't think we would get to T fifty guessing. Um but we can come back with a number, I'm guessing it's gonna be. Okay.
Um I have, oh, go ahead. So I have a couple of things, um maybe this is for Chris. Heights Arts.
Yes.
I know they have like an appendix A that they used when they first did their, um when we first did their allocation, no, I'm sorry. When they first came to you, I would assume, to our law department. And is is that, is that document satisfy the requirements? The legal requirements, or do they need to do something else?
I'm trying to remember specifically. I know I got an email from Rachel Thursday or Friday, I just need to circle back and see what it was she was asking about in it, but they are just about all wrapped up, if we needed anything, I believe it was just some clarification in that scope of word.
Cause she called me over the weekend and I I couldn't answer her question.
Okay, yeah, I I know, I was out Friday unfortunately, so I wasn't able to get to her Thursday email. But I'll I'll circle back with her.
All right, I I just wanted you to know that's, there was some question in her mind as to what it was Heights Arts needed to do.
Sure.
To comply, and then I take it everybody got the Dobama email? Um anybody interested in? Anything there, I mean, they basically have a request.
I don't think we're there yet in terms of seeing if there's more. We're still shifting around and not seeing the.
Right, we don't know what the bottom line is.
Yeah.
So I would suggest that everybody look at it just in case, you know, I mean, I'm not pushing anything one way or the other, but obviously yeah, both real time constraints and the self imposed ones, and they're they're very real. Yeah.
Um for acting director Schuster. I've got the June thirtieth, the quarterly report that you sent us, so thank you for doing that, I appreciate it. I wanted to know, on this report, there was only one nonprofit that had received money, have you been cutting checks for any of the others who are starting to see money come in?
For some of them, yes, some of them are still waiting for contracts, like there's no future heights, all that stuff's still out there.
Okay, all right, and then um the business assistance, the programs that we keep talking about applications for those folks, are they revenue replacements, I keep my brain that's okay that they're in there or are they, we need to worry about them in terms of the contracts?
Yeah, so we're gonna do, if you remember, we were gonna split that up where three hundred thousand was gonna go with the party to distribute those, so we, that satisfies our encumbrance, so we're issuing an RFP for that. Uh and then the remaining nine hundred thousand would go to revenue replacement because we wouldn't be able to disperse and contract with individual businesses.
Thank you.
Could we get a spreadsheet showing where we are with all the nonprofit allocations? Like contract sign, money, check cut, like doesn't have to be super detailed, but just so that we can like look at it. Okay, great, thank you.
Director Clean Scale, um I know that uh it was suggested by Councilman Posh that you know, road resurfacing could be something or just road repair, road resurfacing. Are there any other infrastructure type projects that could be contracted this year that you think are would be a priority?
Not that can be contracted this year. Because it takes maybe a year to uh design a a sewer pro- a sewer project. And based upon the funding that was assigned to me to the sewer department, it's like I'm just barely meeting that with the projects that we have out there now, so it would take, it would take a while to design a sewer project per se.
Okay.
Um a road project probably would not, would not take us long, but we still have to identify which project and we still have to contract with the engineering firm to design that project.
Um let me just throw something else out. Suppose the administration decided they wanted to get rid of all the parking meters and. Would 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 that be something that would take a long time to contract and also I guess would be our eligible item? I don't know, would that be like a, I guess that's a lot of questions.
I don't know if it would be our eligible.
Yeah, I mean, I would ask you that question.
But um that's something we kind of throw around the past, so it might be something that we could po- possibly do.
On the sewers, uh do you know approximately where our spend is on the eighteen that we've allocated? And are you confident that we will be able to spend all that eighteen within the ARPA guidelines?
Time.
Time wise?
Um I'm I'm confident that we should be able to encumber all of the funding that was assigned by the thirty first of December.
And that.
One of the things that we did though, we're also looking at water projects part of that with the East Fairfax project, so that's, that is also added into that because at the onset of a project, the engineer may estimate the amount and then we bid the project and it may come in low. But we've had that happen on a couple of our projects, so just to be on the safe side, there are a couple of other things that we're looking at doing.
And and water infrastructure was an equally eligible use, and we've had some conversation about that will be bringing a modification to the prior legislation back to council.
And you know, that just brings to mind, this is slightly off topic, but we probably are due for an update on our consent decree compliance. I mean, we haven't talked about that. I don't remember the last time we talked about it, to be honest. But that would be uh something that I think we should just.
Mr. President, are you referring to an executive session update from outside legal counsel as to the status of that?
Or is it McMahon who's?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I don't know, would that have to be done in executive session?
Yes.
Okay. I I I don't know.
If you wanna preserve confidentiality and privilege, it has to.
Yeah, no, I, and I mean, we've had conversations with them. I can't say this council has, but previous councils have had conversations with McMahon publicly as well, so I I wasn't sure if this one.
Right, you just have to, correct, you just have to manage the content of of the discussion. And it could be, I think, at least in one case, there is um confidential discussions with council followed by a public presentation of steps when we were ready to file the uh you know, read it over.
I remember that.
Master plan.
Yeah.
Which we did.
We haven't heard back from them yet.
But I would like to at least look into doing that, yeah.
Um I thought at the end of the year, we transferred, we increased the general fund budget for traffic calming to four hundred thousand dollars for twenty twenty four. It's in the general fund, I don't know, we have spent some of it, but not a lot of it. If that could be considered shovel ready, perhaps if we could get some traffic calming out there or contracted at least before the beginning of the year or, you know, by twelve thirty one, is that realistic, Director, or is not?
Are you looking at the June uh June reporting?
I don't have the um that particular account with me, but it, I'm just looking at the last entry that we did in twenty twenty three.
Because we have, we have spent some.
Yes.
Money. So with the the traffic calming, which is under capital fund, we have uh we probably spent about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars maybe with some contracted work that we did. Or at at uh North Park and Harcourt and then Fairmount and um Coventry, we did some striping at Fairmount and Coventry. So we we spent about a hundred and fifty thousand there.
Okay.
And also we have some supplies that we're ordering. We're also looking at uh the roundabout at Caladonia. So.
You've pretty much spent.
Yeah, we're gonna be pretty close.
Thank you, just a.
Okay, uh so we're picking a date, is that what we're doing, or a time? You want it to be on a council uh meeting, on the council meeting day?
Well, no, because that would.
Three, that's three weeks out, so if you wanna do two weeks, it's the thirtieth.
What what do you?
Thirty.
So so far, one person cannot be there.
I I can't, I'm out of town, half that week.
The first half, I take it.
The first half.
So when when are you back?
I believe the third.
The third is Russia.
Here we, here we go.
Yeah.
Yeah, back the second.
About like Friday, the twenty seventh?
I'm out of town that day.
I've been a meeting all day.
We're talking the twenty seventh.
Director Zian, how much time do you need? Like if we were to look at next Monday, would that be too soon?
That's too soon.
Okay.
I mean, the twenty twenty sixth is sort of pushing it live. That late, that week language.
I- i- is there any way that you can do the seventh through the tenth, or is that too late?
Well, yeah, that's.
We don't wanna wait that long too.
I, is the goal to get legislation ready for the for the first meeting in October or or is that?
Needs to be comfortable and our preparation of legislation needs to be ready for the October meeting.
If heading toward that October, three.
I suppose a nice way of putting it.
So if the team wants to do this sometime between the thirtieth and the the second, even though I cannot make it, I would be, I mean, I, you should meet if you're on a time deadline. I'm gonna be okay with that, obviously.
What's the, what about the first Tuesday, is that too late?
Well, he's he's out.
No, oh, you're out?
I'm out, I mean, and that's.
Oh, okay, I'm I'm.
He's like a third.
Just ju- just just meet without me and I'm, and I get it, so.
So you said you're back on the third?
Well, I'm back on the second, but then we have holidays starting on the third.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So one, the first, anyone, the first?
I could do the afternoon on the first.
And do like uh one to three?
I can do that.
Well, she.
Oh, you.
We 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 would have to do it between ten and one to include Vice President Russell, so. Okay, so there's five, are there five of us available on the thirtieth? I'm not trying to push for that, but I mean, I don't know what else to.
You have an admin services date meeting that day as well at five, so four, four?
But but we.
Always four.
Yeah.
What's wrong with the first?
Um.
I'll show up at four.
You'll get it.
Uh there's three, there's three people that can't make it, yeah.
Wait.
Oh.
So you're available in the afternoon, you said?
But then we have an issue with.
On Monday? Oh, and then, but what about like the evening of the first, what about like four P M. or later on the first?
Yeah.
Uh you know, well, we make it uh six o'clock. I've, it, I mean, I, you know, it's, and now we got staff coming at night, so you'd have to.
If it works, it works.
I I can do it, well, but he doesn't want, he wants to do it before the council meeting. Now we got it. Okay, so the first at six o'clock uh is the only person that can't make it, Councilman Posh, is that true?
No, she can't make it.
Oh.
Okay. Yeah, what to do?
I'm on account.
What about the second, the evening of the second?
Well, that's the start.
Yeah, that's that's right.
Yeah, so.
Yes. That's fine.
Okay. What about the evening of the thirtieth, like after the administrative services meeting, like six P M.?
It would be, five would be.
I'm on account, yeah.
Okay.
It's nothing like a live.
Director Schuster, when will you be in?
On the twenty seven thirty and and the first.
So what about the afternoon of the the second? So that's before sundown on the second. Councilman Posh, you'll still be.
What about the evening on the twenty sixth? Is that too soon?
No, I think that he said, that would work for me.
He said, he said that was too soon, the evening of the twenty sixth?
Or I think you said that's the soonest.
We could do that, yeah.
And then Director Schuster, you'll be in town.
Okay.
Okay.
Six to eight on the twenty sixth.
Six to eight on the twenty sixth?
We can do, I mean, this is just community hall, right? It's not a council meeting. I could come, I can come, I can probably be here close to five thirty, but I just, I, it's, I'll be rushing, I'll just be and work here.
I'm out of town, but I'll participate by Zoom.
Oh, yeah.
Just for committee of the hall.
I'd like a Zoom like two, if that's okay.
So five thirty?
One, two, three, four, five.
On the twenty sixth.
Let's see, I'll do. If I'm able to start without.
What time are we starting?
Five thirty. Five thirty, is that what you said?
Five thirty.
Uh huh. We'll see what happens, you you all can start without me, I'll, you know, I'm on my way.
Okay.
Okay, anything else regarding this single topic today? All right, well, hearing nothing, uh this meeting is adjourned.